... Sometimes. What was that? Did I say where you've been on the curries or something?
Yeah. It's five oh.
I'll call this work session the Scottsboro City Council order. Invitation back given by Ms. Kennermer. The pledge led by Boy Scout Trip 18 and Conscap Pact 263.
All right, God, we give you thanks and praise for your great goodness. We ask you to be with the mayor and council as they go about their business this evening, leave God in direct and all that they do. We ask your special blessings on these groups of young people gathered here to be recognized for things they have done for the community or things they are about to do for the community. Be with them, their parents and their families. These things we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I refuse. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is to discuss tourism grant application for Collins Rock Club. We have in your pack an application. Mr. Christie Shankles would like to speak with us about this.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I just wanted to very, very briefly give you a pretty much a bulleted list of some of the reasons that we are applying for the tourism grant. A group of teachers and I, we're looking at how our, we can impact not only our community but our students. Our age group, fifth and sixth going into seventh and eighth grade is a critical age for students. It's a critical age for our youth. And a lot of times, this is where we start to first see indicators of premature dropout thoughts and stuff like that. So, we wanted to try to figure out what we can do. So, we started looking at what other communities were doing. And one of the big things that other communities are doing to help partner with the schools in trying to provide extracurricular involvement for our students along with providing them with the skills that will help them in the workplace is to provide community theater. You can look on your list. I'm showing you some cities that are relatively around our same size and you can see that many of them have not only one community theater but two. And that was something that we don't have here anymore. And so, that was one thing that we wanted to focus on. And we know that what we call in education is the four Cs is what our community is looking for and so is businesses looking for. And that's the creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, communication. And we'd like to say that's also one more thing. Our fifth C would be confidence. And we know that by providing students in our community an opportunity like this, that that will help them and it can help us as a whole, not only in the school system, with reducing our dropout rate, but it also can help in our community. Because if you'll notice some of the things that I put on there about dropout rate, it's pretty overwhelming when you look at crime statistics and dropout rates. A couple of things, our performance is going to be August 19th through the 22nd. And we have two public performances. On the 19th it'll be 6:00 PM. On the 20th it'll be 3:00 PM. The tickets are $10. They can be purchased at Collins. And then, we are offering two school performance days where our neighboring county schools have been invited to come in and watch the performance also. And I've also listed on here some of the things that we're trying to do right now for fundraising, selling program ads, of course, our ticket sales, and then theater sponsorships. Of course, I'd love to invite you all to become a patron of the theater. But, so, I'm coming forward to plead our case to help us out.
And Ms. Shankles, I asked you to break down some of your costs a little more for the council. Can you get that back to us this week?
Yes, I should.
Ms. Butler, do you have any questions?
Thank you for your hard work and your dedication.
Mr. Smith? And Ms. Shankles, you're asking for a tourism grant in the amount of $2,500, right?
Yes.
Your actual cost of production that you have projected is $10,904, right?
When we first started approaching different community theaters to find out, what is your low ball on putting on production of this size, full and feasible? And that was the low ball cost. They go all the way upwards of $8,000. So, we're too afford in it to just start that because, like I said, we have a brand new program, so.
Thanks, Ms. Butler.
Thank you.
Next, we have to discuss resolution to surplus of veterans' field lighting. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I had been approached by a county school about acquiring the used lights that were taken out of veterans' field. We have them stored. We had at one time thought we might could reuse them and Mr. Oldies had researched in top of Musco and the parts were no longer usable. We had reached out to the tech school and they were willing to try piecemeal and make something of these, but we just didn't pursue it because the power ward, in their opinion, felt like they were just scrapped. So, we need to surplus them and then if it was Skyline School, I have asked them and I'm not sure if they want that project anymore. We just need to surplus them.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Smith? I'll set that for the agenda for next week. Also, we'll set Ms. Shankles' grant application for next week. Next is discussing LED lighting conversion. I believe the company came and installed a few lights at the police department. I haven't had an opportunity. I've been out of town. Ms. Smith, did you have an opportunity to go by and take a look at that?
I did. For some, I went down and they called me and I went down and watched. And they showed me a hallway where they had two or three of their lights up and then at the very end, that one was yellow. And there was no comparison as to hours versus there. Then they showed me an office and it was, I mean, there's nothing at all wrong with the lighting. And I was concerned earlier whether they are part of the school, the county school, I'm sorry, the city school system who made it all there. And some of that didn't go real well. But they assured me that they were not and I don't think they have anything to do because it's really not the same thing. So, I sort of changed my mind very quickly. I didn't think from the change of mind about this and I think it's probably a good thing.
Ms. Butler, did you have any? Chief, what's your input if you don't mind me asking?
I think it's a significant impact on just the visual part of it. Now, as far as the electricities that remains to be seen, but according to the company, the numbers are 50% less.
Cost of operation?
Yes. That just makes sense.
Did you have any?
Well, there's seven facilities because they went ahead and did fire stations, survey on those. There's seven facilities listed and if we went ahead and did a conversion on all of these city-owned properties, it's got a payback of less than one year on our utility savings. And there's a five-year warranty with the lights and plus the bulbs and everything. So, that's pretty significant in itself from a maintenance standpoint. There, here, if you have any other questions. Rick, we did talk to the accountant just to see how we would handle this and email is that they felt like since, you know, it can be treated either way, but since we're extending the life of an asset, probably we need to book it and whatever the expense is and capitalize it, appreciate that over time. We didn't know if it would just be considered a maintenance expenditure or what. So, they got a clarification on that today.
What are you asking the council to do, to do the police station at this juncture or to do all of these facilities?
Do them all.
So, you're asking me to put on the agenda to approve all or not?
That's what I'm asking. We certainly have the liberty to carve it up and see. You know, the police department has the quickest payback, but we've got lights out at fire stations, of course, the police department has lights out. We've got some out here in the front lobby of City Hall that's expensive replacement. You know, it's, you know, it's $88,000, but you're looking at $84,000 savings over a year's time.
May I ask, how long, when we had this discussion earlier, how long are we going to look at this one project to see that there is a savings there?
Well, that's, quite frankly, Ms. Butler, that's my hangup. My preference would be to do the police station and have a 90-day period that we can at least get some minimal data to verify the cost savings. Is that reasonable?
Sure. That works, too.
Sure. That's true. So, we'll place that on the agenda next week.
Do one building conversion at this time?
As a test case. And then, based on that, come back and consider doing the entire, the entire project.
Okay. I'm sorry. You can actually turn all your lights on, the old lights?
Yeah. I'm sorry, but this is a council preparation session.
Okay.
Next is to discuss county project request.
Billy, we are here understanding to present a project that will help our community and also achieve our Girl Scout's goal. Our project target is the Scottsboro City Dog Park. Recently, when we went on a trip to the dog park, we noticed that other than a pavilion and some benches, there is no dog-friendly equipment. We thought, as well as as girls, dogs just want to have one. Our motivation is not only to earn an award, but also to know what we have made and impact our city's dog population and their ownership. We have provided you the copy of the description of the current park department as well as proposals for the small and large doggy areas. We have also listed our challenges and the plans we have to overcome and which include the distribution of these kind of jars. We want to encourage placing these jars at local businesses to help with the funding we need to improve the dog park. We will come back to the July meeting to collect them. As you can see, we plan to stay busy improving the dog park once our proposal is approved. We will also appreciate any feedback, especially of anything that we have not considered. We will also be glad to give any updates on our progress. This project is important to us not only because we are residents of this city, it also makes us live up to our Girl Scout promise and law, which we understand. On my honor, I own child, sister, and my country to help people all the time and to live up to the Girl Scout law.
Any questions?
Are y'all placing the jars at the businesses or are we to go place them at businesses?
We thought that if you had a business, you could like put them there or you could put them on your campus or not.
Are y'all going to be placing them out in the community as well?
We would place them out of it.
I thought you were intending on us to go. We're in trouble if you're.
I'll tell you the hell first, though.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I'm in.
Yes, sir.
I have seen adult organizations wanting $10,000, $2,000 in dollars to City Hall come in with a much less impressive proposal than these two young ladies.
Ladies, I would encourage you to work with the mayor to develop a plan for down there. I think we need probably some detail on what the intention would be on the improvement, but we certainly appreciate your efforts as far. And I'll ask the mayor if he will work with you to develop a plan. Okay? Thank you. Have a good evening.
I don't see a way on here to contact you. I see your name.
Yeah, only Vegas.
Of course, we just got this community stuff. I just want to make sure we can get in touch with you.
Want to get the final contact information?
Next, to discuss revised comp time policy.
Yes, in reviewing, I guess, the documents that we could collect here at City Hall, you've got attachments. There's been some, I guess, just different ways comp time has evolved and been dealt with over the years. And so, Erin and I had compiled this and then she had talked to some other municipalities and we're just asking that you, that we adopt this new policy that would supersede anything that we have here. And the comp time is booked, it's a liability that's booked on the books, if you will, you know, as an expense to the employees. And so, we're just trying to, currently, I think they can do 15% in one fiscal year. We're asking to go to 25% and then there's an option if there's a financial hardship. Entertaining questions?
We'll place it on the agenda. Okay? Thank you. We'll go to delegations. Mr. A.T., with the rest of your light.
Thank y'all. As you know, we've asked for the use of the National Guard Building. This process started for us in October 2015. We can't talk to the mayor at that time when we found out the garden was moving out of Scottsboro. It took them something like nine months to close out their business. I think they left about July last year, 2016. But we came back after that and were still waiting for that time for the city to gain ownership of the building. Once that process started, there was some holdups in that with some issues in that deed. It's my understanding now that that's all been cleared up and the city has possession of their property and we'd like to move forward with that process.
Ms. Butler, I understand that that's just recently.
We've had the deed about 10 days at most and we actually were down there today looking at the property and I think y'all have been gracious to me at once and we talked to you today about it. But, you know, we have prepared any paperwork with Mr. Kennermer for a lease to the armory and worked out all the details, but, you know, I think we're still open to working with y'all and making this thing happen. One of the things that is going to be affected is the drainage grant that we've gotten and I think I've talked to some of y'all on the side. You know, the back parking lot's not going to be quite as deep behind the main armory building and all that's going to change some.
And we're still waiting on the actual drawings. Drawings on that. And we understand that. Obviously, that's a part of the property. Looks like deed's about as much cleanup as anything. They let that get in pretty bad, special fair. You know, also, we like to get that thing in there and aim as much as anything, it's our lease. So, you know, that's one of the proposals we'd like to put forward to them, you know, with some comp stipulation in the case that we just banned it, it'll come back to the city just like the car did. You know, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to spend money on somebody else. And there's a lot of things need to be done, a lot of improvements need to be made. We all know that. Obviously, we'll take it either way. We don't want to be left out on either way, but that would be our preferred method.
The armory building itself is about 13,000 square feet and then the motor pool, I'm going off memory now, is about 6,000 square feet and then there's another thousand square foot metal building. It sort of sits between, are y'all in need of all of that?
Yes. That's, you know, a lot of that armory building has a lot of square footage that's not real usable, the main part of the building.
Right.
The motor pool part of it, we want to put our towed equipment or boats or some of that kind of stuff in that we, I know y'all haven't been in our building in a while, but, you know, you have to move three pieces to get one out and that's pretty aggravating when you want to get out in a, you know, in a timely manner.
Right.
That's kind of been our idea behind that, put our towed equipment, most of it, our loading equipment over into that building and use the other building for the rest of our storage, meeting room, office area, et cetera. You know, one of the things we've thought about and we've asked about, right now, there's no shelter in this, in the city of Scottsboro. Not even this part of the county anywhere. That's a great facility for that. We would want to maintain, maintain some of that area for some storage. I already talked with EMA. They've got some things available. Don't have where to put it. You know, down the right-hand side of the building with the simple classrooms, you know, we thought about doing that. Put some of that stuff in there where it's accessible for us to pick them up in Scottsboro and we'll pick them out in the county. I know we had tornadoes last year. Those were a struggle to get up and running for 48 hours because they had to go to Montgomery and get it.
Right.
Some of that stuff we could put here and have a place to put it. We don't have a place to put it right now. We don't have a place to put it. They don't have a place to put it. Nobody in the city does for rent space somewhere. Nobody wants to do that. So, you know, that was kind of our idea with part of that building plus, you know, it's got kitchen facilities, it's got restroom facilities, showers, what have you. That's kind of some of our gist of what we want to do with all that facility. That's part of the reason for needing that other building too, the second building. That's one that's in a, kind of in the worst state. It might have a roof on it one of these days pretty soon. I know when we looked at it, it didn't look like it was leaking, but you can drive by and look at it. It's just a matter of time. It's going to have to have some work done.
There's an empty lot if you're facing it, facing the motor pool building on Seager Hill, there's a large grass lot. Used to be a substation there years ago. And I know we had a, got a storm shelter committee that's met. We're looking at options and ideas around town. You know, we're in our planning stages, which I'll be open to. Should be in place on the same.
And also, we, that part of the property, we don't necessarily need.
Yeah.
And I don't think we would ask for it to just be kind of sit to the back so you have parking. We're going to have parking.
It's free.
Got a park. That'd be the other thing, at least in my opinion, if we would like, I see, I know, just scoot it towards back.
Sure.
Seen some of these others in some areas where they put them and they didn't laugh with that. That's not a good thing. But I see, I don't know what side you're looking at, most of us, the single ones around 90 people, I think.
Yeah, a little 200 if you're.
If you're a buddy.
Need to get them in there.
Yeah. It takes a lot of parking too, I think.
Yeah.
Now, we wouldn't be opposed to that at all. Matter of fact, we'd probably do some care, take care of, look after, be better on the side if you've got something else going on.
Well, I realize this has been a long process, but realize it's only been in our life about 10 days.
We don't have.
I'll give the mayor, the camera time to get there, to get there done in a row.
As when we came to, with the mayor Potter in October 2015, we first approached him, that was within a few days of finding out the garden was moved. And also, we don't want to do that. And that's the reason we're here again tonight. We know you've only had it a few days, only had it a very short period of time and, you know, it's a kicking in our memory.
I appreciate it.
You don't get, you don't ask. You don't get, you don't ask, man. And, you know, we don't want to be left out.
Sure. Any questions, Ms. Butler?
Well, I've said it before and I'll say it again. People come to us for every kind of financial situation, anything we have that they might want, they come and ask. It's never said these people come, but of one organization, and I think you can ask the police shooting that, I know you've been asking me for the 26-year dollar there, if you ever needed them, you can have to call us one time. I don't care if it's 2:00 in the morning, 3:30 in the morning, they're out and coming. And there's things they do that we can't do. So, to be honest with you, we all, we all know a lot for many people. One instance, one time when they stayed on at Goosebumps for like eight, 10 days to find two boaters that had drowned and they stayed 24/7 for like 10 days, taken off of work. And we, as a police department, had no way of ever finding these people. They were stuck under the water and could not have come up properly and that thing was right all the time. So, when you, when you deal with that kind of thing, if you can help them, you help them. And of all the projects that I've been involved in trying to help, and as I talked to the mayor up before this conference, I'll even vote for that light and think he would need to do it. But I'm serious when I say I really.
You don't say that.
Thank you, chief. And we, y'all, we've been around since 1960. Our legislation started then. Some of us have been in it a long time. We've got some new guys coming on to replenish the blood, so to speak, and they've been very active and it takes them a big interest, which is good for us. We're glad to see that because we get no younger, obviously. We had a two-day training this weekend, two eight-hour day schedule. Appreciate your consideration. Hope you can help us out with this.
Thank you. We'll leave the reports, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I've got several things actually. First, I wanted to recognize, was it 7263 or 263, that they were involved in a cleanup effort and it was pretty extensive. They had contacted Eddie Blizzard about a project they were going to do and they cleaned up Highway 79 and North Soddy Bridge and around the boat dock area. And I commend these adults and young men for what they did. I think they ended up with over two tons of debris and 53 car and truck tires that they hauled out there. And they need the big community for their efforts in doing that. We appreciate it. I wish more people would take the pride that you've taken. There was a group. There was also a group that was spearheaded by Ms. Allen, Clemens Road, the homeowners out in campground circle Clemens Road that took it on themselves and I think they accumulated more than one truckload of trash that they had picked up themselves. So, I commend that group as well for their efforts. Speaking of Clemens Road, Josh and I talked to the state last week. The earliest bid date that we can hope for right now, based on information from the state, the earliest bid date is going
talked to the mayor up before this conference meeting, I'll even go for that light and thank him for the, for the. But I'm serious when I say I read this.
I didn't say that, that's what I mean.
Thank you, Chief. We, y'all, we've been around since 1960, our organization started then, some of us been in it a long time. We've got some new guys coming on to replenish the bloods, so to speak, and they've been very active and it takes them big interest, uh, which is good for us, we're, we're glad to see that because we get no younger, obviously. We had a two-day training this weekend, two, two other days scheduled, so. Appreciate your consideration, hope, hope you can help us out with this.
Thank you. We'll move to reports, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I've got several things, actually. First, I wanted to recognize, was it 7263 or 263, that, uh, they were involved in a cleanup effort, um, and it was pretty extensive. They had contacted Eddie Blizzard about, uh, a project they were going to do and they cleaned up Highway 79 and North Saudi Bridge and around the boat dock area. And I commend these adults and, and young men for what they did. I think they ended up with over two tons of debris and 53 car and truck tires that they hauled out there. And, uh, they need to be commended for their efforts in doing that, we appreciate it. I wish more people would take the pride that you've taken. Uh, there was a group. There was also a group that, um, was spearheaded by Ms. Allen, Clemens Road, the homeowners out in campground circle Clemens Road that took it on themselves and I think they accumulated more than one truckload of trash that they had picked up themselves, so I commend that group as well for their efforts. Um, speaking of Clemens Road, Josh and I had talked to the state last week. The earliest bid date that we can hope for right now, based on, uh, information from the state, the earliest bid date is going to be November, this year, November 2017. Uh, there's a, a project within Jackson County that they have to get completed and it has not bid yet, but they have to get that project completed before they will release our money. So we're at their mercy. As you know, the Goose Pond Trail Extension, uh, I think it's slated to be started around the first of July, around July 5th, I think is, is the target, they don't start in that project. The drainage project that we were just talking about, uh, behind the armory and back there, it's supposed to go out for bid, uh, the end of this month. We hope that project will start the first of August. But these bid documents shouldn't impact what we do with the armory, but I just wanted you to know that's, that's the timeline on that. Downtown, as you know, is progressing real well. Coby Lambert has said that they hope, or their target to have the outside portion of the square done by July 1st, then they will get to the inside portion of the square. When they get to the inside portion, and I was talking to Matthew Hutchins today some about it, when they get to the inside portion, they'll literally have to close off one side at a time because they'll be, because of where their equipment's going to sit, you won't be able to get vehicles through the inside. They hope to be done or expect to be done with the outside portion, but it's the first of July. Uh, and Veterans Field, uh, it's moving on real well, uh, all the backstop retaining walls have, have been completed, they're starting the concession stand area now, uh, and knock on wood, we're, we're on budget, we might be a tad under budget, so that's a good thing, but that, that's gone real well, we're real pleased with, with the toller and CTS and everybody's efforts down there. We leave speed up. Uh, and then last, we had, uh, we, I say City Hall, I sent out a letter, there's going to be, uh, if everything goes according to plan, a major road project for Cecil Street that will take place the month of July. We have notified residents, uh, on Woods Cove and the Quarter Road that truck traffic will be diverted during the month of July while Cecil Street is closed for a waterline replacement. And we're also going to be replacing the culvert, uh, there by the fairground that comes under Cecil Street, so that's a big project coming up next month. And last, in your packet, I had left you a letter about, uh, state basketball tournament that Yvonne and I wanted to bid on, uh, since it's a bid, I'm not going to discuss all the particulars, but there's a, a letter in there and if, if we do bid that, if you approve that, then it would be in next year's budget, but we have to have our bid in by July 1st. A E R A, or A R.
A R D.
A R P, I get all that, all the acronyms, but anyway, it's, uh, state basketball for parks and wrecks, 139 teams participating this past year in the state tournament, so that's a big draw, we'll consider it perfectly before it's going to be bid. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Butler?
I don't have anything, thank you all for being here and for your help and all you're doing, um, thank you girls for doing the work.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Smith?
I don't have anything that I may be sending outside the door.
Play that to our audience.
The only thing I'd like to, to say is, uh, seeing these young people here tonight is certainly encouraging. I appreciate the, the effort and the dedication that they show and it certainly, uh, makes me understand that we do have a bright, a bright future, uh, in this city. With that, don't worry, anything else, we will adjourn until next week.